Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of June. We appreciate everybody. In our council chambers and also those of you watching us on Electric City Television. The invocation tonight be given by Councilman Steve Curvin and respects to the flag is to be given by Mayor Pro Tem Don Chapman. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are thankful that we live in a land of freedom where meetings of this type can take place. We ask for your guidance and for your blessing on this body. Please help us remember at all times that when we sit in these seats, we speak as a government and not as individuals. And in doing so, help us always to honor and respect the rights and liberties of every individual subject to the jurisdiction of this government. Help us make reasoned and fair decisions in all that we do. We ask for your special comfort and support tonight for Councilman Matt Harbin and his family during this time of loss. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the May 23 meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
By first by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of May 23 passed unanimously. We have two items of old business and the first item is request second and third reading of ordinance 16-11 to amend ordinance 16-03 regarding the Business Assistance Program. Ms. McCall.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this ordinance was an opportunity for your economic development staff to have another tool in their toolbox in order to provide incentives to our businesses citywide. And as is the case a lot of times with new programs, once we began to implement this program, we realized that our intention to make all, to make the programs citywide, we had failed to include that interior outfit and maintenance program. It was specifically identified as applying only to the downtown district. It was also the wishes of the city council and the staff felt like that that was one of those programs that should be available citywide. And the amendment to the ordinance addresses that and makes that opportunity available. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading and we certainly recommend approval of it on second and third tonight.
Thank you. Did anybody come forward in between?
We have, we've had no calls, no, no, no questions or no, no opposition to that.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Mr. Roberts?
Mayor, I believe that we may forward with amending the ordinance.
That was first by Mr. John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion that we approve it on third and final reading.
First by Mrs. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our second item of old business is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 826 South McDuffie Street from R5, Single Family Residential to NP Neighborhood Professional. Ms. McCall.
This is a piece of property that has been utilized for both residential and commercial uses, often owned during the years. In the, although it most recently has been occupied as a residential dwelling, the office uses of the past is still evident even in the parking lot and other, excuse me, improvements that were made during its past history. The Planning Commission did meet on June 7th and recommended unanimously the approval of the rezoning from Single Family Residential to Neighborhood Professional. We would recommend that you approve this rezoning. And please remember that before occupancy for its commercial use, that all codes as far as building codes, anything that would be that change of occupancy, they will still have to meet those requirements before occupying this as a commercial use.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
And I guess they would have to meet all the regulations since it is in a historic district. Is that correct?
That would be correct. If, if they're going to make any exterior changes to it, that would be correct.
This is sitting in my council seat and I haven't had any cause for concern. I know it has been sitting vacant for a while. It's been an eyesore, so just very excited to see about somebody fixing it up. So I will make a motion that we approve it on first reading.
Second.
First by Mrs. Stewart, second by Mr. Chapman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the first reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on second and final.
First reading.
First reading.
You're ahead of yourself.
About a week.
A little bit, couple of weeks. Alright, we'll move on to new business. We have five items of new business and our first one is a big one. It's request consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2016-2017. Ms. McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have the public hearing tonight and presented a balanced budget, which you all have seen before in the meetings that we had scheduled with you all for work sessions on the budget. It's correct, as we said earlier this evening, that there's no tax increase in this budget. There's, there are no fee increases in this budget and there's no reduction in services. And it is a balanced budget. It also represents less than a 1% increase in the, as far as the change from last year's budget to this year's budget. And we've had, we had no questions at the public hearing tonight and the Finance Department nor the City Manager's Office have received any other questions from the public about this. I would like to say a special thank you to our finance staff, Peggy Maxwell, Margot Martin, Tamara Lindley, and Elizabeth Dicey, who were here tonight, as well as all of our division heads who have participated in working with us to present this budget to you tonight. And of course, this certainly represents a policy and planning document that sets the stage for where we will work on your priorities for the coming year starting July the 1st.
Thank you. I know we all spent time over the last month or so in regards to the budget talks and sessions. I don't know if, if anybody from council would have any other comments or observations.
I have one observation.
Yes, sir.
It's wonderful to not have to do anything to raise taxes. People, folks are overtaxed and sometimes they feel, feel the pinch. So it's wonderful to know that we can do the services for the community at the same time not raising taxes.
I agree.
And in that turn, I would like to approve the budget for 2016-2017. Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lockridge, the second by Dr. Thompson, to approve the budget on the first reading. Any additional comments? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the first reading. I guess a comment is, is that, you know, it always amazes me how we come to this meeting and we pass it real quickly. But it's, there are a lot of hours in regards to finance and, and division heads and, and council. I think we did, I think, you know, we did a lot of, had a big change last year in regards to some of the way that we fund things and enterprise funds and made it a little bit easier, I think, on these guys this year that we set in place a lot of good things going forward. So I look forward to the future. Our second item is request consideration of an ordinance establishing the September 2016 special election. Ms. McCall.
Mr. Mayor, it's with, I think, mixed comments that we bring this issue before you tonight. Having a special election means that we will have to fill a vacancy on our council based upon Mr. Curvin's retirement for this position in order to assume his appointment by the governor and confirmed by the legislature to be the master in equity. That position, he scheduled to begin those duties July the 1st and therefore had to resign from his seat on city council. Mr. Curvin certainly served the city council for 24 years and I think we've been blessed to have someone sit on this council who's given his time and energies and shared his knowledge with us. And, but because of that, we are required to fill that vacancy specifically on the 13th Tuesday after the vacancy occurs. That's according to your state statute. And the ordinance that you have before you sets that election schedule, this is the same type of schedule which you set when you have your regular election other than the date. It specifies that the filing period for candidates begins on noon Friday, July the 15th and runs through noon Monday, July the 25th. Just as a reminder for the public, that filing is initiated at the Anderson County Registration and Election Office, which is at 301 North Main. And then once someone files there, they come to City Hall and actually pay their filing fee here. The last date to register to vote is August the 27th. And we bring this to you for your first reading tonight.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, guys?
I miss you, Steve.
Oh, I'll step around.
To Linda's point, I mean, Don Chapman and I were with Mr. Curvin at a noon meeting at our ANATs. And I asked him, I said, "How long have you been on the committee?" And he said, like a true public servant, he said, "I have no idea. It's been a long time." But you know, I mean, it's, it's always people like Steve do the public's work and they bring things to the table and they make us think about things that we should be thinking about. That's always a positive thing.
I agree with that.
So.
Make a motion, we accept. General approval. Is it general approval?
No, it's first reading.
First reading. As presented.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Agreed.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Our next item is request consideration of capital improvement plan purchases. Ms. McCall.
Well, speaking of budgets, thanks to the good fiscal planning and, and the sanitation capital equipment fund, the city has been able to acquire capital equipment by which we are proud to be able to deliver the services that we do. For the current budget, we have a list of vehicles and equipment that we'd like to present to you tonight in the amount of 107,897 dollars. And that comes out of your capital equipment fund. We still have, or we would estimate by the end, by June 30, we will have a balance in that fund of 111,000 dollars. So we're not quite spending all of that. But if you remember, this capital improvement plan, the list was developed by your division heads and specifically our Public Works Director Kerry Stahlnecker headed up that effort to make sure that we were looking at our equipment strategically and replacing it in the proper fashion. What you have before you tonight is a combination of, well, one vehicle from the police, for the Police Department. It includes one for Fleet Services, equipment for engineering, our Signs and Signals Department, and also for your Cemetery Department. The specific list is, is attached in your package. And we've gotten bids from vendors on all of this equipment unless, of course, like the two vehicles, they came off of the state contract. And our staff is here to answer any specific questions about the equipment that you might have.
I might ask a stupid question probably, but on the thermoplastic applicator. So how's that work?
If you'll notice the parking spaces behind City Hall, that they have new names. That's what that is. It's a thermoplastic and they heat it and it actually adheres to the asphalt rather than painting them.
Okay.
It lasts a lot longer.
Thank you.
I've got, I got one question too. On this electric shovel, is that, is that built so that you can lean on it?
Are these parting words?
I'm just asking, I'm just curious.
It would help lose weight because it does vibrate like a jackhammer.
Oh, Lord.
Tony?
Just curious, going back to the mayor's question about thermoplastic applicator, it says this applicator is going to be used weekly, you know. Is it like, you have to replace them like every week or something? What, what does that mean?
No, that's just the usage. They plant on marking parking spaces, doing some stop bars, different lines with it. So they'll be, it's, it's a daily use, but during the first year or so, it's going to be used weekly. It may taper off, but no, the equipment will last.
And is it like, we have like an X number of spots they're doing, like 2,000, 300? You know, what does this 19,000 get you halfway down Main Street? Or how far do they get from point A to, where's point A to point B?
Jim Sims, our Signaling and Sign Department head, did not exactly explain that part to me, but it's, I think he said we could do all of downtown and most of the parking lots that are city-owned with this initial. And then after that, all we have to do is buy the material. The machine will stay.
The other good thing is unlike the paint, it's, it's, once they apply this thermoplastic to the, to the surface, you're free to open those spaces or open that lane of traffic or open the parking spaces up really immediately because it's, it's not like paint that has to sit there and dry. So it certainly is a faster application in terms of its duration and it lasts longer than paint does.
And who, what department is going to be putting those down?
Uh, Siglen.
Siglen Sign.
And we have what, two, three people in that department?
There're supposed to be six ones out on Workers' Court.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chapman. It wouldn't be the same if I didn't ask a question about a vehicle. So the F-350, what division is that going to? Because that's a 350 four-wheel drive.
That's Fleet Services. It's going to be a service truck where they can go to remote locations and basically fix a vehicle. It's going to have a winch, push bumpers if they have to help a vehicle get in. They'll have an air compressor, welder, so that they won't have to have something towed in to work on it. They can fix a lot of things on site.
Okay. But we have a tow truck, right?
Yes, we do.
That, this one's not going to tow, it's just going to push?
Well, it can push if, if we have to.
Okay. And then, because obviously a 350 is a, is a big super duty, but I guess the other question was for item three, is I, I thought I had asked this on the previous time where we had had surveying equipment. We talked about water and sewer, that I thought the equipment that we were buying at the time, from the previous, I guess, iteration of items that were added was, was part of that as far as the GPS coordinates. But from what I understand, that was pulled out and was never purchased. So we're.
That's correct. The original packet that Chris had submitted was like $42,000 and we were running short on the funds with that phase of purchasing. So he backed this part of the equipment out.
Okay. But now, once we, once we acquire that, we'll have all the latest, greatest surveying equipment that will be set.
According to Chris Everard, yes, sir.
Okay. Alrighty, that's it.
Thank you. Anything else?
I make a motion, we accept it for general approval.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Our next item is request consideration of Police Department application for the Justice Assistant Grant, better known as the JAG program regarding street-level crime apprehension program. Ms. McCall.
Well, the first good news about this particular program is it's not going to cost you any money. This is the JAG program that the mayor mentioned. This is a 100% grant to us from, for the street-level crime apprehension. And we've had this funding in place since 1997. So this is what funds your overtime for your officers to be out doing saturated patrols in, in areas in order to reduce our, our crime and be proactive toward controlling crime. This, as I said, does not require a match. So the $21,280 will go toward the cost of our officers and other support personnel for overtime directly related to that program. We are required by this grant program to bring this before you in order for us to apply for the funding. So that's why you see this on your agenda. So it is an action item in order for us to receive these dollars.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Nothing except this is a great idea.
Yes.
It's, you know, to take, to be able to get this grant and be able to put people out there to help protect the folks. I think that's one of the things. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this.
First by Ms. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion?
We've been doing this for several years, haven't we?
Yes, ma'am, since 1997.
Hadn't the funding been more at one time? Or is it about the same? I can't remember.
I think it probably has varied over the years.
Yes.
But the, the good thing is it's not competitive. It's, it's dollars that are made available to us for, for the asking and it's 100% money. So.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Our last item is request consideration of agreement with Anderson School District 5 regarding school resource officers. Ms. McCall.
I know you're all familiar with our long-term relationship with School District 5 as it relates to our school resource officers. We've probably been in, working in cooperation with the school district for the SRO program for at least the last 15 years. It's, we've had a combination of funding over the years. During the, the last year, or maybe the last two years, the school district did fund those school resource officers 100%. Prior to that, we did split the funding. It, and the, this year, the school district asked us, because they were structuring their budget to reflect their school year, which is 190, 190-day school year, they asked that the school resource officers be placed on that same schedule. Because as you know, after the school year is over, those school resource officers are reassigned from the schools back into our workforce where we assign them to patrol, we assign them to fill vacancies other, in other areas in the Police Department. They help out for filling in for not just vacancies, but for illness or holidays. So it is true that during those other days or those three months and, and over Christmas holidays, when those officers come back into our workforce, they are working directly for us as police officers rather than being in the school. So the proposal that you have before you tonight is one that addresses funding where the, a more equitable means of funding in the sense that the school district is paying for those 190 days that the school resource officers are in their schools and the city is paying for the other portion of the SROs when they're in our workforce. That's essentially a 75-25% split. And this is four, five SROs. Those five SROs, one would be at McCants Middle School, one at Southwood Academy of the Arts, one at the Anderson Career Campus, and then one SRO that splits their time at Whitehall and Concord. And the fifth SRO is split between Calhoun and Nevet Forest. This doesn't really have a term limit on it. I mean, it's meant to cover the school year. We will actually bill, if you approve this, we would bill the school for the time, which is what we've done before, bill them for the time that the SROs are in that 75-25 split. And that covers the cost of salary, clothing, fuel, parts, and repairs for the, for the vehicle. That amounts to approximately $70,082 for the city's portion, that 25%. The school district would be approximately 210, 279,000 for their 75%. This does not increase your current budget, the one that you've just passed. We would propose that that $70,000 would come out of the existing Police Department budget. And we would recommend it. We do believe there's, and the chief is in here.
Yes.
Audience tonight. We do believe this is a benefit to us. Number one, we do, we do directly get the benefit of those officers in our workforce for those three months. But aside from that, the partnership that we have with the school district to have certified uniformed police officers in our schools is of benefit. They know the people who are in, the, the students who are in the schools. They know about the neighborhoods. They get information. If there is an event that occurs, we're there on site. We don't have to wait for information to be relayed to us. And I'm sure the chief can speak to other, to other benefits that are accrued to us. And I'm sure the chief can speak to other benefits that are accrued to us for that $70,000 in cost. We are recommending approval of this memorandum of agreement between the school district and the city.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
On item three, under financial responsibility, one of the things, does the SROs not have specific training? And if so, who's paying for the training and their time being trained for that particular position?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chapman, we actually send the SRO to school on our payroll. They go to the Criminal Justice Academy for two weeks in Columbia.
So the city pays for their training and their...
We would prefer they be trained before they enter a school. That is a class that's available to all our officers to have advanced school resource officer.
So it's not an updating or continuing ed or any kind of additional training like that?
No.
All righty, thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Chief, under item 4H, I never knew that SRO officers had teaching certificates. Are they going to be teaching classes in the school too?
I believe what they, they are not actually like a certified teacher. They just help out with law classes, criminal justice program classes. Maybe just like a guest speaker, which I've been at Westside this year myself already for at least three classes.
But it's not like...
Not a certified education.
You know, they're working with the teachers to schedule the teaching time. Won't teach no more than two hours, two periods in a given day. So I just didn't...
Ms. Curvin?
Let me preface my remarks by saying that I have a great deal of admiration and respect for School District Five and all they do. And, you know, I went through school the entire time through District Five. My son did, my grandchildren did until they moved to Greenville. So I'm a big fan of School District Five and their educational efforts. I do have a little bit of a problem with this whole concept because you can paint it up with lipstick and decorate it, but it gets back to, basically, it's a cost shifting. It's a cost that School District Five should be incurring, and they're shifting it to other places. And, you know, I would hope that School District Five would always make the very best decision possible for the safety of the students that are entrusted to them. And this came about as sort of, to me, the way I understood it from what I read in the newspaper primarily, was that it was, well, if you don't agree to this, we're going to just hire a private security firm. They won't be trained, SRO officers. And the inference being that, yeah, you get a second-rate protection. And I think that's a foolish position for the school district to take. I think it's a wrong position. Matter of fact, going back to the painting up of the pig a little bit, you know, my understanding also is from what I've heard, and I don't know any of this firsthand, but, you know, that the, these officers during the summer months, that's when they take their vacations, that's when they go to training, that's when they go to any other thing that doesn't require them to be on the job. So basically, we're absorbing all of that. And, you know, even though it may be nice to have an extra officer or two around during the summer, obviously, we don't have to have them because we go nine months without them. So to me, it's almost like the school district saying, we need to buy a new school bus, but we're only going to use it nine months out of the year. So somebody else should pay that other 25%. In this case, it's ironic in a way. They have an arrangement with the sheriff, who apparently, he's going to be absorbing about $130,000 or $40,000 of these costs for those officers. Well, who ends up picking that up somewhere down the road? Every citizen in Anderson County, even if they don't have children in District Five. And that, quite frankly, is not right. On the city side, we're going to end up absorbing $70,000. And I would correct, in the executive handout that we have here, it says the police department will pay the $70,000. And no, the police department is not going to pay anything. It's going to be the citizens and the taxpayers of the City of Anderson that are going to pay it. And ironically, again, that's shifting that burden from the District Five, Greater District Five, onto the backs of the City of Anderson residents only. And so, to me, it's, it's just not an appropriate thing to do. And what's next, down the road, oh, we built a $20 million new school, and we're only going to use it nine months out of the year. But since it's available to the city to use for other things, y'all have to pay 25% of it. Now, I know that's absurd, but it's kind of the logical extension of this process. So I can't support it.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, wait. Well, I tell you... Sir, look, sir, 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 sir. I don't mind you talking, but you can come down to the podium and talk if you want to. But you can't talk from back there. And, and more than anything, now, let me put some parameters around this. You're talking to us, and this is on this agenda item, specifically about SRO officers, not about any of your children or...
I can tell you about that also. Ms. Hilton?
Who are you?
Tell us who you are.
I called you on the phone, you didn't return my phone call.
I don't know who you were.
Tell us your name.
My name's Larry McAvie. Last year, if you want to talk about the officers, the principal at TL Hannah tried to threaten me with one of the officers because she didn't like the fact that I requested a meeting about my son. I wound up calling 911 because she was threatening me with that officer. He, when he got in there, he confirmed I was not a threat to her. So I've had a lot of problems with District Five. And I will bring the pictures, I will bring the stories to y'all, I will go public with it. I believe I got the pictures on dash in my truck, if I ain't mistaken. If you'd like to see them tonight.
Sounds like you have a problem with District Five, right?
I've got a problem with the city also.
On this item?
No, sir.
Okay.
But I got a summons, go to court. Rick knows all about that, too. I don't know if you know about it or not, but you should.
Thank you, sir.
Well, would you like to see the pictures? I'll go see if I can find them.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Anything else, guys?
Mr. Mayor? I have one other follow-up question.
Ms. Chapman?
If we did not approve this, what is the alternative to? If the council didn't approve this, is the, is the... Because I, and I appreciate what Steve has said, too. Because the first thing I think about is that the school district gets, I don't know, the majority share of the taxes that are collected. You know, the county gets the next amount, and the city gets the next amount. But it's, it is cost shifting, but I'm just asking, if we did not approve this, what happens?
Let me ask you. Can I answer?
Sure.
You know, it's ironic, it's in the newspaper, the article of the day, kind of, that's what got me to look at this thing, is the article was bragging about how the school district wasn't going to have a tax increase. And the, a big reason was because they were shifting the costs on this item to the county and to the city. And that, but they're bragging about how they're not going to have a tax increase. Well, sooner or later, the city is going to have a tax increase because of it. That may be a year, maybe two years, maybe down the road. The county the same way. So the other, the other fact I found out, I was trying to look, well, how much money does the school district have? And they got a bunch of money. I mean, the best figures I could find go back to June 30th, 2015, but they had a fund balance unencumbered of almost $20 million. So to answer your question, what would happen is the school district would have to make a decision on whether they're going to provide school resource officers, train people that do a good job, and pay for it, get their financial priorities in order, and pay for it like they should, or whether they're going to go cheap and put a risk to students. But that's their call, it's not our responsibility.
Well, I think, to add to your point, Steve, I think they tried to go cheap one time. I think the student took the gun from the, from the security officer over at one of the middle schools and...
That's why they shouldn't, that's why that's been a bad decision.
And, but they also get another pot of money from the Safe Schools Grant that the Anderson Alternative School writes a grant every year, about $300,000. And all that money is split between the five districts, and that goes back for Safe Schools and to the District Two, which is probably $50,000, $75,000. And so, so there's other funds out there, too. I hear what you're saying.
Chief, what's your feelings about this? My main concern is if we eliminate the SROs and not fund this, then we're going to rely on our zone officers within the city that are assigned zones to your wards. When you look at that officer that's working in the area that, you know, you're assigned to, they've got to answer the call to solve the problem first. When they get there, they have to investigate. If there's an arrest made, that officer has to make that arrest, paperwork, warrants, summons, the time and transportation. It's a juvenile waiting on the parent to get here to the PD. That is the job that our SROs do every day, and it keeps all of that business off of our regular zone officers. Me, as, you know, as the chief, I would prefer, and as I understand what Mr. Curvin's saying, it is a safety issue for me, I'd rather have the officer in that school if something was to happen. We have excellent response time here in the city. We usually can get anywhere between three to five minutes. I would prefer that officer to be in that school and be ready. All of our officers are equipped with AR-15s, and they can get to that kind of equipment really quick. As a parent also, in School District Five, I recommend it.
I would imagine, though, would you say that the SRO officers or the majority of their time is being spent in the two high schools? I know we're not in the high schools.
That's correct.
But would that be correct?
We do have the career camps.
The career camps, probably...
Very much, they're for the officer presence, especially as the students arrive in the morning and as they leave. They're in the hallways, McCants and Southwood both, very much involved every day. The elementary schools are more as...
I guess that's the elementary school we're splitting.
Right.
And I guess my, you know, if I, my peanut gallery comment is, is that, you know, are the resources, and then you fall back to Sandy Hook and, you know, the elementary schools. But, you know, are the resources being better used at the, maybe the middle school, high school level? I, you know, I just...
For me, it's kind of like insurance that they're there. So when that day comes, they're already there.
Yep.
Well, and I have, I guess, one more follow-up, just, because I truly believe, and I don't have children. I went to District Five, but I don't have children in the, or we don't have children, so... But I feel like there's part of the SRO's role is, is the safety side. That's a big part of it. But the other part of it is sometimes this is the only one-on-one contact, positive contact, that some of the, some of the young individuals have with a police officer. But, so, and I think you would lose that if the school district, if we chose not to endorse this, and the school district wanted to go in that direction without, with hiring, I guess, security officers as opposed to a police officer. But what I don't want to see it happen is that it's pointing back at the city, saying, well, you didn't do that. So it's our, you know, it's on us. I think if they didn't have a surplus of money, if they didn't increase their taxes, I think the multiple times before every year, except for this one, I would probably lean more towards wanting to support it, but...
I would imagine that surplus is falling right in line to the three to five months of expenses that we all should have, I would think.
The question someone asked was, what are our alternatives?
Well, I think the recommendation from the staff is, is that we go forward.
I know, but I mean, that's a recommendation, but we're discussing it now, and there's some things coming up that maybe we hadn't thought about. So my question is, are there other alternatives to achieve the same results with the SROs? Do we need to go back to the drawing board and look?
I don't know, and maybe the city manager have, you personally and your top-level management, have you sat down with the school superintendent face-to-face? Or have we just sent the chief over there to let him talk? I think if you have, and I think that maybe have our top management, meaning you, and him sitting down, looking at everything. If that's been done, then that's what's been done.
Well, Mr. Wilson and I have not sat down to talk about this in a formal setting. And I think it's fair to tell you that we have, we certainly have talked about it, and with their staff, the chief, with Amy Heard, their finance director, with some of their other people who are on our law enforcement dream team. We've had these conversations, so it's been, I think it's fair to say that your management here and their management there have been in conversations about it.
But I think that some of their management has given some wrong information out because Ms. Heard has went on record as saying that they were buying the cars, they were upfitting the officers, and that's not true. We provide that, the school district does not provide that.
Where'd you hear that?
It was in the newspaper. You know, and I think we confirmed it, that said that maybe, you know, that she misspoke about that, but she did say that, you know, that that's something that the school district was providing, and they don't provide that, we provide that.
Can I interject?
Well, it was confirmed by London.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject something?
Yes, sir.
When I was reading through this material, one of the things I noticed was what a resource officer does. I was in the school system and retired about 15 years ago. And when I was an assistant principal in the school district, one of the responsibilities I had was exactly what a resource officer does. The problem with that is that I was not a law enforcement officer. There were times when I got the short end of the deal as an assistant principal. I, in good conscience, cannot, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Curvin. I totally agree with you that the school district is probably swimming in money. But at the same time, I think that this is something that we need to go ahead and adopt. And it's something that is good for, good for the kids. I mean, if you'd look at nothing else, look at the children. So I move that we adopt this, this motion, this statement of resource officers.
Well, let me...
Let's do the motion. We have a first. Do we have a second? First by Mr. Lockridge.
No second. Okay.
So what's the wish of the council?
It fails on a lack of a second. The motion.
Well, I think as your staff, we need a little bit of direction from you in terms of, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it is true, they're talking about paying for the 190 days of the school year, and the 70 other days that are in the work year, those resource officers, those law enforcement officers are reassigned back into our workforce. So I don't want, I don't want that to get lost in the fact that we do put those people back to work. Yes, it is true, like Mr. Curvin said, and there are cases where they use that time for training or they might use it for vacation. But likewise, we have officers that are taking vacation, or they're out on illness, or we have vacancies. So it's not, it's not as though we get no benefit out of it. But we will be happy to go back and talk with the school and...
Is it possible to quantify, Chief, the amount of benefit we receive aside from having a trained officer, which we all believe is the right thing in our school?
Two things. We do have one SRO that is working a short period of summer school. Everybody else has been reassigned to patrol investigations or into evidence. So we use those people very heavily during the summer, also during Thanksgiving, during Christmas holidays, which Christmas is our busiest time of the year. With the alternative school, as Councilman Stewart said, that's six officers we were able to put out on the road during Christmas. Also, when we were doing... Um, also, when we were doing, uh, coming up with the cost on this, there was, um, some other costs that Mr. McEwen and I spoke with that were added to this, um, that the, uh, school district is gonna share in the cost of liability insurance now, whereas in the past, we paid that. Also, uh, equipment replacement and vehicle depreciation. So, that's something new that they're gonna share the seventy-five, twenty-five on, that they didn't in the past.
So, let me ask a question. Would these, would these SROs be on our payroll full-time if they were not working at the schools? Would they be added to our payroll year-round?
That would be a huge budget increase.
Answer's no, isn't it?
Right.
And I'd also like to close with my comments with, uh, looking at the newspaper article. Uh, it says they're gonna save two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars on both the city and the county portion of this cost shifting. And they said, "Well, because we're doing that, we're having to take less money out of the fund balance." Uh, if we didn't do this, if we didn't save the two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, we would have to take more than a million dollars out of the fund balance. So, in other words, they're still gonna be taking close to eight-hundred thousand dollars out of the fund balance. It's not like they don't have the money that they could pay for it.
Now, one, uh, and, and I'm about in agreement with Rick on this one. I guess the other side of it is that, as in regards to the cost sharing, for example, last year, the school district basically paid for officers to come back in the workforce for those months that they were not in the school.
But they're not needed.
Well, they are, they are needed.
They are needed.
They're needed, why don't we have the other nine months? Why don't we add however many, five officers to our police force? If we can't get by for nine months, we can get by for nine months.
We talked about...
Obviously, we can get by for three months.
We talked about relieving officers while they're on vacation some months.
They're making work for them, is what you're doing.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add one more. You know, I'm, you know, I'm kinda, um, hanging over the fence, you know, I, I don't agree, well, I agree with what Mr. Kirvin said. I think the school district needs to, um, uh, take the responsibility and pay for these SRO officers, but at the same time, I think us as, uh, this council, we need to think about, one, the great thing that the dream team that Dr. Thompson came up with, we're getting our officers in the schools, trying to get the kids in the elementary, the high schools, to get the better relationships between the city police officers and the community, which goes way back, you know, it, it goes a long way to cutting out the crime, the gang activity, and then if we remove that element, which those schools have already embraced, and those, not, not the schools so much, but the students have embraced, then, and you're putting a security guard, a flashlight cop, in front of these kids who they're not gonna respect. You're gonna have more crime in the schools, you're, the gang activity is gonna arise. I think you're, I, I think you're going to, uh, I, I, I think you're gonna cr- open up a can of worms I don't think that you want to address. And, um, you know, just sitting here thinking about it, I would make a motion that we accept this as presented, but in the upcoming, in, in, in the interim, have our, have our city managers sit back down, this is just first, this is just maybe, I think, first reading.
Take the one.
First reading, this, this final, this agreement, okay. Well, agreements can always be amended. And, uh, to sit back down with our superintendent to see if we can't come up with some better solution, but I think, 'cause we heard from the chief, if we have a security guard making arrest at the school, they may come out there and find out what they did is not appropriate, and they may say, "Hey, this arrest is not appropriate." And so, the ultimate goal, we're still spending our police officers coming out to the school, whether they're in the school to curb the problem now, or they're gonna have to curb the problem later, we're still gotta come to the school to respond to it. So, um, but again, that would be my motion.
Well, I would, I would ask a question about that motion. Do you really think that if we approve this tonight, they're gonna renegotiate it within the next two weeks?
I guess that's, I mean, uh...
And that's obviously not, they're not going to.
Well, to my point, I don't think your motion, as Stewart, is any different than Mr. Lockridge. I mean, as far as the approval of contract, and, and is there a, is this a year-to-year contract?
It, there is no term on this.
Term.
If you, if you would like to, to postpone your action tonight in order for us to have a conversation with the school district and the superintendent, um, before, and, and postpone this until your next meeting, we'd be glad to do that.
I would recommend we do that, 'cause I have no idea that I'd be against SROs in the school. It's a wonderful thing, is you thought...
It is one of those things.
It is.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that, everybody wants that.
But I'm saying, because of our discussion here tonight, I think that if we went back to the drawing board, Linda, and talked about the things that we brought up tonight, come back to our next meeting and put it on the, on the, uh, agenda.
Well, and, and, and just so you know, Dr. Thompson, I mean, this isn't the first proposal that they presented to us, so I, I think that's what we're, we're sharing with you, is that, um, it's gone from security guards to, um, to dickering with the percentage, and so, I mean, we, we have talked with them some. We're certainly not opposed to sharing your concerns. Um, this is the first opportunity that you all have had to really weigh in on this publicly and, and share your thoughts. So, as your staff, we don't have any problem going back and, and relaying those, those concerns, um, and seeing if there's something else that's more, um, acceptable to both parties.
I make the motion that we do that.
Well, let's, let's, wait a second, we got three motions going.
Your motion hasn't been dead with this.
Mr. McLean.
Yes, sir.
Get me out of this. As far as we have, motion, motion, I mean, do we actually have to have a...
No, so your motion's dead.
My motion's dead.
Huh?
The, the motion on the floor, Tony made to accept the...
Well, actually, Rick had the first motion.
There's no second, so they can just withdraw everything and postpone it to the next meeting.
I withdraw my, I withdraw that.
Yeah, I have a vote on mine. I, I won't say we're passed, I, I won't make a motion. I want my motion to stand and see if I get a second on it.
Your motion was to accept it as, accept the agreement as presented.
I don't...
Is that the same thing?
I'm gonna say this. Uh, I'm not sure that we'd come to any kind of different solution, even if you could sat down with, uh, with Mr. Wilson to talk with him. I'm not certain that they would come out with any other solution, and the thing about, about it is, uh, I understand your concerns about this being a, a shifting of funds, but, you know, sometimes you have to do things because it's the right thing to do.
And sometimes you have to say no because it's the right thing to do.
But sometimes you do the right thing, and you pay for it out of your own pocket, yes, you do. I do it all the time.
Well...
I help people a lot, and I, I take it out of my pocket and do that for them. The thing about it is, this is an op, this is an opportunity to, to help children, and this is always, and, and keep them safe, and that's the whole general feeling I've got about this whole situation.
Why don't we just pay for the whole cost of it?
I think it's short-sighted of the district. I think it's very short-sighted of the district.
And we're, we're, have a gun pointed at our head and saying, "Okay, now let's negotiate this."
Well, I think...
We've already negotiated it.
But I, yeah, and that's the point. I think we're being, as policymakers, we're being unfair to Linda and her team, because they just didn't accept this as it was. I mean, the school just, I mean, even though there hadn't been a face-to-face, we've been in communications, and it's been, I mean, there's some more cost sharing, such as liability insurance has come out of that. So, I think we've tried to do it, and I think probably the school district has tried to do it fairly. I, I just don't know what we can ask them to do other than say, "We're not going to pay twenty-five percent." And, and if that's what we're saying, we should tell them.
Mayor, may I add this, and, and the sheriff and I met with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Bradshaw, the chairman, um, and I know the sheriff was very reluctant on this also, 'cause you're talking about, he has nine SROs in District Five, they'll fund the two high schools, but he's gotta come up with the money for seven SROs. Uh, he, he was very reluctant with that, but the Anderson County Sheriff's Office is moving forward with this now.
Well, it's election time.
Well, he's gotta come up with almost double.
How long is the SRO...
He doesn't, the people who pay the taxes do.
Yes, sir.
How long has this program been in effect?
I believe since nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine or...
But I, but I feel like, and again, I feel like what, what has happened is that they're, they are gonna put the safety of the children in, in, uh, to security officers as opposed to police officers as an option to lower a budget. The one thing that you probably, that all parents out there probably would say, "Don't compromise the safety," but that's the one item on the table that they're gonna try to reduce cost, but I think it's, a lot of it comes back, it's, it's gonna be shifted to us, like, it's our responsibility.
But shouldn't it be shifted to us, because they actually do come work for us at some point in time? That's, I mean, it's not like...
Mayor.
Yes.
All right, back to, uh, the elementary schools that said they, they, they're gonna shift it and, and it's gonna come back on us for not providing the, the proper resource. Well, we already share on one school, the, the one my children attend. There's not a full-time SRO there. We already said he's splitting between schools, so they're already splitting.
Well, but the issue is...
Right there.
The issue is, number one, the school district has a responsibility for protecting those children when they're in their schools, and if they're foolish enough to make a decision that says, "Well, we're not gonna have SROs, we're gonna have run-of-cops," or whatever they have, then that's very foolish, it's very wrong, and they all should be put out, put out of office. But it's, it's not our, it's not our job to oversee and ensure that the school board makes good decisions. And that's basically what, all the argument I'm hearing tonight is, and I don't disagree, yeah, I want SROs in there too, and I want the best protection for those children, but don't shift that to us, the city taxpayers, when it should be a school district obligation. They've got the money, it's a matter of priorities, rather than just saying, "Hey, you know, here's an opportunity, we can push this off on somebody else, and push this off on somebody else, and therefore, we'll have more money to spend on something else we wanna buy." And at, at some point, you gotta say, "That's not the right way to do business." And I don't think it hurts to go back and say that to their face from our city manager, and, and let them know that we feel strongly about the way that's coming across, because if they get away with it on this, there'll be something else down the road.
Like what?
May I, that's a question.
Like what? I mean, what else, what other partnerships are we in there with the school district? What else could it be?
The rec center was a perfect example.
But going forward, what else? There's nothing else that we share with the school district?
Athletic facilities.
Talking about the ones they let us use free?
The ones that we, that, that they use for ours, and then we use for their, for, for ball fields, for lacrosse, the old McCants, practice fields that they have, gymnasiums that they have for our youth teams to practice on, so it's a, it's a...
Share.
All school buildings theoretically are available for public use on certain things. Now, they have some rules and regulations about what they allow and what they don't allow, but so the next, next thing may be, "Oh, well, you gotta pay for part of this building, because y'all gonna get to use it when we're not there."
It'd be like us letting somebody use the rec center, which we don't let people use the rec center...
You're being short-sighted.
Without cost. I don't know.
I think the school district's been, being short-sighted.
I think we are too.
No.
Okay, listen, go ahead, John.
Agreement, I think that, you know, we, obviously, we all want them there, and, and we don't want the burden of it, but, uh, as a community, we're getting some use out of it as well. That's why I asked if there's a way to quantify it. Can, can you say it's eighty percent, eighty-five percent school, fifteen percent us, ten percent, I don't know if we can break those numbers down, but, um, I, I...
We still have a motion on the floor, right? Tony's.
Tony's motion.
Mr. Roberts second. Do we have any further discussion?
Motion, clarify your motion.
Could you clarify your motion for us, Bud?
The motion was to accept the, to accept...
It just, you gotta think, you know, all the hard work that we put in as staff, you know, to try to build up the relationships within the schools with our police department, and then we're gonna take the, and then we're gonna probably look at an opportunity where this is gonna be thrown out the door, and at the same token, you know, will we, how would we feel if they were a Sandy Hook incident happened at our schools because of a vote that we took not to have SROs over there, and they had, they had, um...
Well, how would the school board feel?
Well, I, I, I hope they feel a lot worse, but I sure would feel real bad, you know, but, uh, you know, again, I think, I think that we, you know, that we accept what we got, but again, I think that our staff, our, our upper management can go and continue to have dialogue. If anything changes in the interim, then so, you know, you can always amend an agreement, but if it doesn't, we can work towards something next year. It's kinda like...
Ms. McCon. Ms. McCon, wait a second. Go ahead.
Yeah, we were gonna say, even though the one that you have before you does not have a term, if you wanna put a term on it, you can say it's for, you know, um, the fifteen, sixteen, our budget year, and then you can revisit that if that's, you know, I mean, we've certainly got, we got time to talk about it for as long as you want us to talk about it, and then work on other, other details, but, um, if you wanted to refine it further by putting a term on it tonight, you could certainly do that.
That would kinda address your issue.
Yep.
You, me and yours, you and me and yours to put a one-year...
A one-year term on it.
John, second.
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna have to change my mind on resigning, so I can be around the next time we talk about this.
No, you can stay, man. We don't want you to go. Don't take the job.
I like to come back as a citizen.
I'm sure. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. No? Two? Pass at six, two. Administrative briefing, Ms. McCon.
Can I make a, 'cause I didn't get to make my comment. I think it's odd that we make, we're, we're passing something like this, and our, and our chief administrator has not met with their chief administrator. For what, I mean, I appreciate what the, what the chief has done.
You had to, yeah, I agree with you.
I understand that.
You had to, I mean, you made a lot of comments, but anyway, that was one you hadn't made.
Well, we need to...
Administrative briefing, Ms. McCon.
We would like very much to share some additional good news with you tonight.
Good news.
Well, we had good news, uh, uh, in the, uh, first, first half of the meeting.
Uh, yeah, that is good news.
And, and this good news is about the demolition efforts. Thank you to, uh, the council for, um, allocating a hundred thousand dollars for us to demolish substandard houses, and we've asked Maurice McKenzie to give you an update on that good news and what our, um, community's response to, uh, the demolition has been. So, I would direct your attention to Mr. McKenzie, but also to your screen for some, uh, visuals that paint the picture.
Yes, correct. Good news. Back in, in February, you approved a contract with Miller's Construction to, for a contract not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars to demolish as many substandard houses as we could with that amount of money, and you may recall that, along with your input, the staff compiled a list of houses that were not just substandard, but they also met other criteria. They were the ones that had the most negative impact in neighborhoods, they were properties that we felt like we had opportunities to get consent from the property owners to demolish the houses, and also, they were properties that had opportunities for redevelopment. So, with that list, uh, we moved forward, and so far, we have thirteen houses that are on the ground now, and they've been demolished, the debris has been cleared from the lot, uh, the lots have been graded and seeded, and the slideshow I have here of those thirteen, I just have four houses to show you that before and after, just to give you a perspective of the impact it does have in neighborhoods. And we'll start first with one-twenty-six Sanders Street, that's over in Dr. Thompson's area. You can see the before, it obviously was a little substandard. And afterwards, that's the lot being cleared, and the grass has not come up in this particular picture, but you can see the difference there. Moving on, we have three-zero-five West Reed Street, which is also in Dr. Thompson's area, house is substandard, been abandoned for a long time. That's the before picture and after. And the next property is over in Councilman Stewart's area, that's four-fifteen Churchwell Avenue. This is one of the first houses we demolished. And afterwards, you see the difference, and actually, I believe there's grass growing in that one, 'cause that's one of the first houses that was demolished with this one hundred thousand dollars. And one more, just to show you, to give you a perspective, four-seventeen Gray, that's also in Councilman Stewart's area, that's the before, and then, as you can see, the after, again, you can see the lots are nicely graded, seeded, and easy to maintain. That was part of the, uh, requirements in the contract with Miller's Construction. So, again, thirteen houses on the ground. Moving forward, we're in the process now of finalizing details to demolish four more houses. houses that require an extra step with asbestos abatement, asbestos abatement. Uh, the law requires houses that may be adjacent to each other, they have to go through the asbestos study process. And there are two houses side by side in Councilman Stewart's area, two in Dr. Thompson's area, area that we had to have asbestos studies conducted and sure enough, they all had asbestos. So we're now finalizing, uh, the services of an asbestos contractor to take care of that abatement. We should have that finalized tomorrow so they can move forward with the asbestos abatement and demolishing those four houses. So with those four houses and the thirteen already on the ground, that obviously gives us seventeen houses that will be demolished. And of the one hundred thousand dollars, ninety-seven thousand dollars will have been spent on those seventeen houses. But fortunately, a few of the houses that we have demolished and are getting ready to demolish are in the county's forfeited land commission. And the county has agreed to reimburse us the expenses for those houses. So we'll be getting a check for about seventeen thousand dollars. So with that seventeen thousand, the three thousand we have left, that gives us twenty thousand dollars. We'll be able to tear down about four more houses with that money. And that'll push us up to twenty-one houses. And I believe there'll be another house in the forfeited land commission that we'll be able to tear down as well, which gives us obviously twenty-two. And when we started this process, we were hoping that if we got twenty houses, we were doing, you know, a pretty good job. So it looks like we're going to exceed that. And I'll tell you, just talking to the contractor and the staff that's out there on the site when the houses are being demolished, just getting nothing but positive comments from the, from the neighborhood. They're just so excited about the impact this is making and really grateful to the council for allocating these funds. But it really has been a beneficial program so far, but be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I'd just like to piggyback on what Maurice said. You know, in one instance, I think the neighbors came out and started clapping...
Yeah, we had applause at one of them.
When, when the house was being torn down. So, uh, they are very excited and a lot of these are, uh, have been eyesore's for a long time and, um, especially with the summer months, you know, with rats and snakes. And in the wintertime, you've got their, their havens for drugs, for people squatting in the houses and different things. So the, this has really, really truly helped the community. So, um, you know, I think it, it was a very, very, um, uh, I'm very, very thankful to the city council for, um, passing that hundred thousand dollars because it has went a long way and I hope that we look to continue to do that in the future budgets.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, how many houses have they totally torn down? I mean, how many, do you know, have any idea how many the total amount?
With this, to this process, or...
Over the years.
Over the years? Wow.
Last decade?
It's over three hundred and fifty and that goes back about ten to twelve years.
Goes down from two, two thousand and five through two thousand and twelve.
We had monies budgeted annually for demolition and between like two thousand and five and twelve, what Ms. McConnell said, we were very aggressive in demolition.
That's very good.
I'd like to, uh, go along with Mr. Stewart in saying how much we appreciate the council allocating that money because it means a lot. If you saw the looks of those houses and people having to live near those houses, you know, it was a terrible thing. So you can now look at green spacing, those lots, and if you have a lot that has two houses, you can perhaps, uh, build another house there. And that's a great thing. And so I really appreciate that and it's a good, it's a good move for our community.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I know, uh, Linda, Maurice, maybe that, uh, Eric also has...
That's what we were just discussing through the NIP, uh, program. Sixty-four. NS, is it NSP now? Okay.
That's the stabilization money?
Yes.
Prior grant.
Okay.
This, this is money that we didn't have to pay for, right? Came from a grant.
It's a grant, correct.
Yes.
Um, upcoming events starting tomorrow night, it's not on the calendar, but, uh, community development and our, um, Community Housing Resource Board is having a mortgage process workshop tomorrow night at five thirty. That will be at the Municipal Business Center. Uh, you've got the Chamber Small Business Awards on Thursday at lunchtime. And then you don't want to miss Friday night downtown in Carolina Renn Park, The Force Awakens, the Star Wars movie. So I know you want to, uh, pack your, pack your popcorn and come get your early seat. The movie starts at eight fifty. And then, uh, this weekend, a, a favorite is the Father's Day Car Show that the Main Street Program puts on. So I think that begins at nine AM and runs until four. It's always heavily attended. And the twenty-first is Seat Two, their Neighborhood Watch Program at six PM at Station Three. And then the last weekend of the month, uh, we have our own event, Shakespeare in the Park occurring at Carolina Renn Park. The show starts at eight PM each Friday, Saturday and Sunday night.